Hey Brian.
Hello there.
How's it going?
Pretty good.
Okay, I'm here. Is, um...
Not yet.
Is Garrett on or...
Haven't seen him yet.
Were you able to talk to anybody else, Brian, about the community preservation app?
Not yet. We have emailed to the selectman's email address in the past, so...
Okay.
We'll keep at it.
Okay, Garrett's trying to get in, so that works out.
Do I need to text him a link or anything like that?
I don't think so. He said he had, but when he clicked on, it was bouncing him out, so... Give him a minute and see if he can figure it out. Hi Bernie. Yes.
Yes, I had a quick question, Dave Manti. A meeting hasn't really started, but I had asked about the Hearst Auto license. Do you know if there's any progress on that? To try to get the new license at the last meeting?
Did I send you an email?
Uh, I don't recall seeing one.
I asked if you could see if you could retrieve that license from him and put it in my box. A town hall will fix it.
Well, he physically got it, I believe, on a piece of paper, so you just can't...
Is there a way that you can do that or have him bring it down?
Well, if it's on a piece of paper, you just can't scratch on it and write his name. I don't think the state would accept that.
Dave, did I lose you?
Uh, no, I'm still here. Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear him.
You can hear him?
Yeah.
I lost him somehow, so, Dave?
Yeah, I'm here.
I can't hear him.
Dave, you're muted.
Uh, no, I'm not.
I can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear him too, yeah.
He's clear on my end.
Uh-oh, Bernie got issues? Bernie? No.
He could hear me a minute ago.
Yeah, Bernie, can you hear me?
Doesn't look it.
No.
Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and I can hear everybody else, but evidently you can't, so I don't know why that is, but...
Okay, can you hear me, Dave?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
They can hear you. There you go.
Can you hear me, Brian? Just, I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Dave, did you hear my, um, my comment about like having him put it in my box at town hall?
Right, I believe it's a physical piece of paper with the, like, the certificate on it, and I'm not sure if the state would accept just adding his name in a pen. You know what I mean? They might think he did it. And this was like officially typed on the original license, his name and Hearst Auto Body. I mean, auto, so I don't know if they want it typed or just, are you guys gonna just write it in and sign it?
We're gonna figure it out. If I have the original, it would be helpful. We voted to do it, so I can write a letter to go along with it.
All right, I'll try to get that from him tomorrow.
If you can, it would be helpful.
And then I'll leave it in the selectman's box up at the town hall.
If you can, yeah, if you could, put it in my box, please, so I know that...
All right. All right, thank you.
Okay, did we get Garrett in yet or no? No?
We didn't, and I'm trying to figure out how I can text him the link. I assume he's on a cellphone. I'm still trying to figure that out.
Do you have a cellphone number?
Yeah.
Okay. I think something that happened is the links now for, um, the new Zoom links, they're like... What, 30 letters long?
If you go to the My Town Government page and pull up your agenda and just click on the Zoom address on the agenda, you pop right through.
That's what I asked him to do.
Yeah, I don't know if he's on his phone, if he can open a website or... Last time I knew, he had around a primitive device, but...
We're gonna have to get Garrett a direct line.
Hello, sir. I'm not too bad, not doing too bad for a CAO, but life's busy, but I'm...
I attempted to text him the link. I don't know if it worked or not, so... There is another, he can dial in too, I believe, so...
Well, he can if he goes on to the, that My Town link and pulls the agenda up. You know, I wonder if he's pushing the right date. Maybe he's doing, um, a meeting that we're gonna have.
Yeah, if he's on the 28th agenda, that one.
Well, remember you mentioned to me about like there was three other ones?
Yeah, but the only one that's good is the one that's in the actual agenda, and the other two, I took them away. You wouldn't be able to see those. You should...
Oh, okay.
Trying to see if I can send them dial-in instructions somehow. This might work. All right, I just texted him the dial-in instructions as well, so...
Okay.
Oh, there he is. He's connecting.
Hi Bernie.
How you doing? Good? Did you get in, like, pushing on the agenda or what happened?
I had to punch in the whole address, the HTTPS address.
Really?
And the first time I didn't do it right. I pushed a, uh, one instead of a small L.
Oh, wow. You're in, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, it's 7:19. We'll call this meeting to order.
All right.
And the first thing, we have a few announcements. Um, the announcements are that we have a new, um... Veterans Director for the Northeast Quavon Veterans District, and the individual's name is Sarah Costa. She's from Princeton, Mass. So, if anybody, um, we'll have that at town halls for people in case they need to get ahold of her, but they would call the District Office anyway. I think that's it for, uh, for the announcements, dear. I am working on minutes. As you know, previously, the CAO was taking the minutes.
Yeah.
And I don't recall since I've been on the board of seeing any minutes. So, we gotta try to figure out, like, going back when that stuff was happening, but I do have minutes for the last couple of meetings. I wanna like, um... Work on them a little bit, but Garrett, what was the practice in the past? How did, how did the board approve the minutes?
Uh, well, Kevin took the minutes, and then he would send out a copy of them, and near the end, it was getting very divisive. And I didn't agree to one of them, and I asked him to rewrite it so that it wasn't as nasty as it was, and then after that, he stopped completely. Um, but I think, um, it would probably behoove us to have appoint somebody now to, uh, take the minutes so that we can, um, focus on the selectmen's agenda.
Okay, and I agree with that. So, one of the things that's happening is I'm getting a little bit of help, um, with that until we find a, um... A Board of Selectmen or a Town Hall Secretary to help us out with some of these issues.
Yeah.
And incidentally, if there's anybody like within this meeting that's interested in that position, they should let us know as soon as they can, because we're gonna be moving quickly on that once, um... You know, once the ad goes in, but somebody can certainly, um, apply for that now if they wanted to. Okay? So, what I'll do, Garrett, is I'll draft up the minutes as I believe them to be, with some help, and I'll send you a copy, and then we can approve them at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm not like crazy about emailing you a lot of stuff because I don't want people to say there's things going on, um, outside of the meetings, but I think it's important that you see the minutes before we... Before we go it on, in case we have to make some changes.
Yeah, do you think maybe you should send them to Karen and she can send them to me?
You know, I can do that, and just in draft form.
Yeah.
Um, that's a good idea. I think what the state worries about is that you're having discussion outside of the meetings, so if we do that, then you see them, and we're not really talking about them, uh, go from there. So, that's a good idea. I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Sorry, Karen.
I see Tim Haley has his hand up. Can we talk to Tim? Maybe he wants to...
Ruth raised hers up at the same time also, but I think it's with the FinCom, the minutes just get sent out to everybody, and then we talk about them at the meeting, and I don't think that's a problem as long as it's sent out saying, "Don't reply to this. Read them before the meeting." And as long as you're not going back and forth before the meeting and just at the meeting, there's no problem at all with that as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Ruth might be able to answer better, but...
Yeah, maybe Ruth had the same thing. Ruth, is that what you were thinking?
Yes, that's exactly what I was thinking. If you're just emailing him a copy of the minutes, whether you were emailing it to one member or two members of the board, here's your minutes. End of story. As long as he doesn't reply, you haven't had any conversation.
Okay.
You know, the same, you could, you could actually, if there was something that was being addressed, let's say, let's say you had an ad for the, uh, selectman's office assistant that you wanted to discuss. If you email it to him, as long as you don't discuss it, like, if he replies to the email, then it's a discussion.
Okay.
But as long as there's no reply, I don't believe that anybody, as long as you, because emails are kind of like traceable.
I agree.
You know, just for your review, do not reply.
Okay. And that makes good sense to me, but, um, I haven't been doing this for a while. I've been out of the loop, so I didn't know if anybody's got, um, a jail sentence out of this for doing it the wrong way in the meantime, but, okay. So, um, the other thing that I have here is, um... yeah, I'm gonna need your help on this. As the Chair from the Board of Selectmen, I signed a safety grant application. And I signed some Chapter 90 closeout forms that this C A O was supposed to sign for the town. Because he wasn't around, I took the initiative to sign those. And under the direction of Town Council, they went, I had some conversation on another matter. He said that it would make sense to ratify the vote. So that's why it's on there. If you see, it says ratified, B O S. Okay. So I guess I would ask for a motion or I'll make the motion to ratify that.
And I'll second it.
Second, and then we gotta do a roll call vote. Fan Dryer?
Fan Dryer, aye.
Okay, Mal, aye. What I had on there about review of our Select Board policies, I wanna, if you have the time, Gare, we're not gonna do it tonight. But I would say to, to look at those and see if we really want all those policies that were in place. This is probably gonna be an ongoing thing because it looks like it was something that was created over four or five years. And I think what we're trying to do is give some of the, give some of the directive to run the town back to the Selectmen. But that'll be ongoing, anyway.
Well, I just wanna say that those policies were something that was enacted by the C A O without any input from the Selectmen and, and without any votes by the Selectmen. So he just put them in and started running with them.
And yeah.
We told him eventually to stop doing that, but he still has been working on them, so.
So I see some of them have a date tied to them and we can look to see if they were voted. Not that it matters because if we're gonna change them or, and some of them might be good policies. We'll look at them and see how they play out. But one of the other things on the agenda was a letter from Kevin Dodge, Chief of Police, about reinstating. And I had it right here. I don't know where I put it. Reinstiting.
Bernie, I've got Chief Dodge on the cell phone here. He's having a hard time connecting.
He is.
Yeah, so he's gonna try to speak through my phone. I don't know if you guys can hear him when he starts talking.
Well, put him on. We'll try.
Go ahead and try there, Chief.
Alright, hey Bernie, thanks everybody for letting me attend this meeting. I'm just having connectivity issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have relating to Dan LeBlanc's reinstatement of part-time.
Do you guys hear that okay?
Yeah.
We can. So anyway, there was Officer LeBlanc worked for the Department before. And he, he took a leave of absence because he had some commitments with his full-time job with the Department of Corrections. It says he retired recently from the Departments of Corrections. And Chief Dodge would like to request to reinstate him as a part-time officer. I personally don't have any problems with that. Gare, if you're okay, we can vote to.
I move that we allowed Kevin Dodge to reinstate Officer Daniel LeBlanc.
Okay, I'm gonna second that. Is there any other discussion on that? I see Dave Matty has his hand up.
Yes, I got a question for Kevin. How is this gonna affect the training, the money you are looking for for the training of the part-time officers?
It's not gonna affect it at all, Dave. We were, we have, it's called a tick for tat. We had one person that we thought was going to stay, but ultimately is not. So it's kind of, it's kind of a wash. We're right where we were before with the staffing. So if one guy's gonna be stepping off, we're gonna be bringing Dan back.
Okay, I was just making sure you had enough set aside for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Kevin. Kevin, are you having problems at all filling any of these positions?
No.
Okay.
That we have, you know, it's all within our department. I know there's been some discussion between the FinCom, you know, how we look at going forward. You know, once this is all, you know, I like to say behind us, you know, we have the ability of hiring from within. We will, we will essentially, if the opportunity comes down the road to have another full-time officer, we will not hire, have to hire from without sign. We already have people that are qualified that we could select. Essentially, essentially, full-time status without having to go to.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no other discussion? Vote, Gare?
Fan Dryer, aye.
Fan Dryer, aye. Mal, aye. So voted. Okay, have a good vacation, Kevin. Enjoy the rest of your week. Okay, so the other business is still kind of like in limbo for the email issues, if there is any, whatever. We had hoped to get some people in there. They had contacted or made contact with Kevin. I'm not sure he got back to them, but then he left for vacation. I'm gonna ask Rick on this one, the Queen Lake Road, that bridge project, whatever it is, what's happening?
Basically, right now, the, I believe the contracts is just a couple of things to go over between the engineer and the town. And I think that they should be signing it very soon. They're very eager to get started on it. But again, the ink hasn't been put on paper yet. So I think that you should maybe wait till the next meeting to vote it, if you're gonna have one next week. But it seems like a pretty short thing, but I don't think it's official just yet.
Okay, that would be fine. And do we have any updates on the, on the school as far as the alarm system?
And I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for Comcast to get back to me. I did go in last week. It didn't take very long. And they're going to be setting up the, the school building with Wi-Fi. And so we can at least try to get the alarm system set up. But we're gonna, we're gonna check with Comcast to see what they can offer for the phone system, for phone lines. I did speak to Chuck Kobleson and I got filled in on how the phone lines work. So we'll, we'll do one thing at a time, I think is a good thing to do, get the Wi-Fi in there and see if Comcast can assist us for the phone service, for the alarm system. And if not, we can go ahead and go through Verizon and maybe get one line at a time as needed so we can at least have the alarm system up to date. And if we need to get another phone line, we'll take that as it comes. But I think Wi-Fi to start with and then I'll move forward with the, with the phone system.
Okay, Tim, you had your hand up?
Yes, back on the Queen Lake Road, that's awarding the contract for the road fixing off to the Petersham Line, not for the bridge. The bridge is gonna be starting Monday, I guess. Do you know where the detour, how it's gonna be run or whatever and how long it will be?
Basically, what's gonna happen is Monday, the road portion, the pavement side of it is gonna be starting. So there's, there's gonna be, we're gonna try to restrict the traffic to local traffic only. We did put up the flash and sign down at the 101 Bridge. And we will move it tomorrow to the other end of Petersham. So there will be a way around. The bridge project itself, from conversations with the engineer, they're looking at around the first week of June would be nice. But again, that's still gonna get signed on the dotted line and make sure that everything is official. And hopefully that'll start the beginning of June and hopefully it will be done by the first week of July, give or take. But for now, it's just gonna be the paving. That's gonna be the milling of 101 from the, from the Petersham Road flashing light to the Templeton Town Line is what is starting on Monday.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Tim?
Yeah, and the vote for the road, that's to award the contract?
That's to, that's to award the contract for the bridge construction.
Okay, I thought that was.
Yeah, I know. It's too different. It's, it's, it's one grant that we're using, but we're gonna be using the asphalt company that the town has contracted for the past three years because we have a really super price. So we're doing it in two separate phases. One's gonna be the paving and the milling. And then the second portion is going to be the bid for the bridge. So the bridge is the one that we're hoping to vote on next week, once we get the official signed documentation from the contractor.
Okay, thank you very much. I was all screwed up. Thank you.
No, that's okay.
Well, I'm glad you asked a question, Tim, because you cleared up my mind a little bit because I was starting, I was starting to wonder the same thing.
Yeah, I know. The asphalt, the asphalt, asphalt portion of the project is gonna be done through the guy that's been doing, or the company that's been doing the paving for the past three years. The last bid that we did for our goods and services, we had a one-year contract, but we had the option of extending it up to three years, which we chose that option for the past two years. So it worked out good for us.
Okay, so I'm gonna go down the line on some of the things that put like business in progress because some of it's old business. It's new. We're working on it. The Secretary, we're looking at still hiring somebody. I have an ad kind of like in draft form and my printer is giving me a problem with the ink. So I gotta work on that a little bit more, but I plan on putting that in the Phillips and News Letter. So I'm gonna have it done in a couple of days. We're on hold, obviously, with the website. The Town Hall painting, I had two contractors call me. They wanna know where we stand. So I went over to Town Hall today and I did retrieve the four quotes that we got. I'm going through them. It looks like the lowest one is fine, but I don't wanna make that decision tonight. I wanna look at the others and make sure that the, that the insurance and the carpentry part and all that is included in all of them. So we're comparing apples for apples. The library roof, I had sent an email back to Chadia Construction asking them to give us a written quote, not just an email, but a written quote and to add the specifications in, just so that we're all on the same page about, are they taking off the existing roof? Are they using architectural shingles? You know, things of that nature, just so that we have something in writing, an agreement between both parties. And if it all works out the way, I think it's gonna, maybe next week we can vote on that one. The Selectmen's Office, I looked at that today with, with Rick when he was over there. We got some, some different ideas. I wanna try to find the architectural plans that were drafted by somebody. I'm under the understanding that the engineer who designed the chairlift may have submitted a set of plans for that office. And while we're on it, like, Gare, are you gonna be doing the electrical work there?
I can if you want, if you don't mind.
What are you looking for? What do you need?
Well, I was holding off because there was a stud missing between where Kevin sits and the treasurer. And I was, I'd been asking for that to be put in for quite some time because I gotta run some wires through it.
Okay.
So once that's done, I can get in there and I already have it figured out pretty much where some circuits are. I have to go do the work through the basement. It's a horrible crawl space, but I've been in there many times. And I'm accustomed to the flavor of the cobwebs down there.
I was down there a few times myself. And as a matter of fact, I think if I recall, I think Dave Bramble went down there and cast some concrete footings for the furnace and stuff because it used to shake the whole building when the, when the old furnace was in there. But in any event, we'll get that stud in for you at least so that you can start moving on that because that's not an ideal situation in there. I'm not crazy about wires hanging all over the place. So the other items, I think, were kind of like on hold because I have no idea about the annual town report, the status of it. If somebody's been putting it together, if it's, we gotta follow up on that. Next week, we should have more clarity. I'm working on getting the accountant a key. Right now, I guess Sally unlocks the door for her, but that's not an ideal situation. And if we can finally get maybe a secretary to help the Board of Selectmen, we can get these warrant articles done. But I don't, is there anything else that participants have? I see Tom has his hand up. Tom?
Should be able to unmute yourself, Tom.
Okay. In terms of the annual town report, last year, I think it was, or maybe last year and the year before, because of COVID at least, we didn't get it out until after the annual town meeting. There was also a request, and I know we voted on a report from the Finance Committee. There was a request from the C A O for our reports. So maybe somewhere you could find them all and/or re-request them again because I'm quite sure all the departments have copies and get them in that way. And then with the warrant, I'm quite sure that the Finance Committee could maybe help work on that, at least with the figures part of it. And definitely, we're gonna need to know the articles. And so I'm speaking out as Tom Spec private citizen, but I, I think maybe, you know, the Finance Committee could help with the warrant somehow.
Well, if I wanna just interject, I've written warrant articles before so I can prepare them for you if you just gave me what you want them written about.
Okay.
Well, I think it's up, I think it's up to whoever has put in the articles so far. We've only got, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Ruth, not even two or three at the most so far, if I recollect. So there's gotta be more of them out there.
And that's what we need to try to do is put it together. Ruth, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I do. And I will say, according to the bylaws, you know, which, you know, might as well throw them out the window. The annual town report is supposed to be done the first Monday, the last Monday preceding the first Monday in May, which means the annual town report is actually due on Monday. So, you know, the Board of Health did send theirs. I double-checked. We sent ours in March 24th. So it should be close to being ready to be done, but it's not. But that's actually not why I raised my hand, but I just thought I'd add that in. Um, you know, I get to thinking, and this is something, and I see that Donnie Smith has his hand up too. The CARES Act funding, you know, the town has a lot of money that they could spend on CARES Act. And I had to laugh because I just saw the recent funding that Royalston has spent almost all of the years where we've only spent, you know, 25,000 out of our 200,000 or whatever it was. And I've seen that a lot of towns are putting in for, they now all have, like Templeton has three of the signages, you know, saying, "Wear your mask" or whatever, which of course can be used for other things. Maybe we should really be looking at, because that goes through, I think, the end of June, of where we can spend some of our CARES Act funding and what's an allowable expense. Because, you know, if we could get a couple of those, you know, flashing. you know, flashing signs that say, right now, we've got one, but, you know, get one that says, "Wear your mask", you know, "social distance" and all that, but in the future, it could be used for, oh, our road closings and other things. I think, I think Phillips and might be missing the boat on some of the things we could be purchasing with CARES Act funding.
I, I agree with that, and it's unfortunate that we don't have somebody in place to, um, you know, to be working on that stuff right now. And there was some discussion even about the alarm systems. Why do we need to push the buttons? Why can't we have the, uh, like, an ID card system, where you go in and just, you know, you know, pass your card through, like a credit card, and so you, so you're not touching the thing, even outside of the pandemic situation, you know, it would make sense to, uh, to have something like that. The HVAC units on the, not just the school, but somebody on the buildings, if we need to do other filtration things, but, o- one person can only do so much, so we're trying. Um, unfortunately, we're at a disadvantage right now, and we'll look at that, and, and I did look at some of the funding, it's very restrictive. I'd like to know how Royalston's getting that much money.
Maybe you need to ask them.
Exactly, or see like wh- what they're doing to, uh, because it, maybe there is something that we can, uh, you know, we can do along those lines, but anyway, um, I see Don has his hand up from the emergency, post-emergency.
Good evening, how are you?
I am fine, yourself?
Good. Um, on the, the town hall, uh, key, I have a key. I don't really need it right now, so if you need that key, I can give it to you tomorrow.
Um, the, what, the key for what, Don?
To get into the town hall.
Yeah, that's not the problem. The problem is getting into the, um,
Okay, into the office?
Yeah, into the accountant's office.
Okay.
And the only one that has a key, my understanding, was Sally and, and Kevin, but I couldn't find the one that Kevin has. Uh, I'm not sure where it's, where he placed it.
Okay, I thought it was for the, the main entrance.
No, but thanks for letting us know that. And, and by the way, there was something that we did two weeks ago, um, about being involved in the regional.
Mutual aid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who, who's gonna send that in?
Um, that was supposed to be signed through the selectman's office, and then that should have been sent in through there.
Okay, so I seen it laying on the desk today, and Gerd had did sign it.
Okay.
So is, is that something that you can facilitate, or?
I, I can. I'll look into that tomorrow. I'll contact my, uh, regional manager, and I'll find out if I can deal with that, and I'll try to get it out as soon as possible.
Okay, it's, so it's, it's signed, and I can get it for you, um, because I have a key to that office. Um, anyway, I, I just.
I can meet you tomorrow, if that works for you, I'm around.
Okay. Let's touch base in the morning then, and see if we can figure that out.
Okay, and, um, a quick thing, if I can, on those signs, they run about eighteen thousand dollars apiece.
Ooh.
Those signs. So, um, I know the town in Templeton did get them through the CARES Act. They were gonna purchase them anyway, but the CARES Act kicked in and helped them out to get, I think it was three of them, as Ruth said.
Wow. Well, I'm glad that Ruth brought that up, and I'm glad that you filled us in on, on the cost, because that's, sounds like it's a worthwhile thing to do. Uh, we're gonna look at that further. I'll have it on my list, so. Okay, um, I'm trying to think who had their hand up for us, but let's say, uh, let's say Tom Douse, he had this.
Hi, uh, so you folks, you folks had asked, uh, about the CARES Act and about Royalston in particular. I know that, uh, Jim Barclay's the emergency management director down there, he's been the emergency management director for quite a while, and he does a lot of the grant writing. Um, I, I don't know if Don can reach out to him. I know Don's not a grant writer, but, uh, he might have some templates that we could use and cut and paste, and he might even have some ideas on that stuff. He's a crackerjack at grant writing. Um, and, uh, he, he's definitely a guy that, uh, folks could tap into in regards.
Okay, who's this? Tom, who, who should we, who should we be talking to?
His name is Jim Barclay, and he's the manage, uh, emergency management director of Royalston.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, I know we got, we're missing the O A C or the C A O, whatever that title is.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's, it's, not only do we need a secretary, but now we need somebody to be able to write grants, so we can help out the taxpayers here. And I know you guys are in a mess, I know you guys are doing a great job, and we can all see that. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, we're, we're doing the best we can. Uh, Gerd?
Yeah, so I wanted to, I wanted to ask, uh, Tom Douse, uh, this guy here, uh, from Royalston, would, do you think he would be willing to write uh, grants for Phillips and as well?
I, I don't know that. I can reach out to him, um. I know that, I know that Jim, Jim's actually eighty years old, but he's probably one of the brightest guys I've ever met. He's, he's got more energy than anybody I've ever met. Uh, but he's also on a, on a limited income, so, yeah, I, you know, h- his time i- is valuable, so you can see where I'm kinda leading this uh, to. I, I don't think that he'd be able to do that if he wasn't able to get some type of income out of it.
Well, that'd be fine, because, uh, we pay, uh, uh, our C A O to, uh, to, to do it as well, so, I mean, that, we can discuss that, but if you can.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're open to that. Um, let, let's go back to, to Don, uh.
Okay.
Let's see what he has to say. Don?
Yeah, I've, um, I've touched base. Jim's been a big help to me, just getting into this over a year and a half ago. Him and, um, uh, Rich Curtis out of, uh, Templeton. Um, I can, I, I let Tom touch base with him, but I can talk to him, but I'll let him go first, and if he needs any assistance with that, just give me a call. I got his phone number. Um, my phone number's out there. It's easy, I'm easy to get ahold of. So if you need any help with that, just let me know. If you need to get ahold of them, and I'd be more than happy to help you.
Good, good plan, okay. Uh, Tom Speck, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, you know, while we're talking about air handling, um, I, um, last year, uh, Karen had, uh, some elections upstairs in the town hall, and there's no air handling up there. And they had all the windows open, and it was one of the hottest days of the summer. I think it'd be a perfect place to put in a commercial air conditioner uh, for the upstairs town hall. Uh, if, it, it's perfect for COVID. So when you do your list, add a, um, some kind of air conditioner or air handling thing, uh, for the upstairs in the town hall. I know, I know she was talking to me, and I know it had come up, and things as usual were kinda kicked around, and probably got kicked right out the window, but it never happened. But like I said, that would be a perfect example. There's no air handling at all, and to use that properly in the future, or, uh, you know, if we could put in a commercial air conditioner and, uh, humidifier and anything else that we could get in one big unit to handle that upstairs, I think it'd be awesome for the town.
But, but we certainly should, should look at that, Tom, but I, I wanna remind uh, people that these things come with strings attached to them. My understanding is, um, Linda had sent me some information, and it said the allowable expenses and stuff, and if I recall, the, um, the air handlers, like AC units and things like that, is, um, twenty-five percent, uh, reimbursable. So you're gonna spend ten thousand to give back twenty-five hundred, so we gotta make a decision at some point, is that uh, is it feasible to do? Is that worth it to have the, uh, additional expense? Uh, certainly worth looking at, though, okay? Again, go on, Gerd.
Okay, so, um, a while back, uh, before this COVID thing hit, uh, I picked up the biggest window air conditioner I have ever seen, uh, um, at a customer's house that decided they didn't want it anymore, but it works great. It's, it, they had it in a room about the same size as the, uh, upstairs in the town hall. And I was, I wanted to donate it to the town, uh, for that purpose, that we were talking about just now, but it, I, it slipped my mind, because there was too many other things going on. So if you want, I can, I can work with Rick Tenny, and we can see if we can't get it up there, uh, and, uh, work on that.
I don't mind investigating that, Gerd, but I think the thing with, with this, this new thing, we, and and we're thinking like, we're all gonna get a, a vaccine, and we're gonna be okay. This is probably something we're gonna be dealing with for the rest of our life. Um, and it's probably gonna, you know, ebb and flow, do, do different things, but the, the thing is that they're trying to do a filtration system, not just cool the air, but they have special filters built into the newer HVAC units and stuff like that, so I'm, I'm not discounting wh- what you said about using that air conditioner, but I think we wanna investigate a little bit and make sure, especially if we're using it for voting, and people are going up to the second floor, that we're actually cleaning the air, not just cooling it. Uh, like, like they're doing in the schools. So, uh, Ruth, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Um, I'm not sure about the reimbursement rate, only because the information that I think just came out this week, it originally was like a seventy-five percent reimbursement.
Okay.
Which looks like it may have gone to a hundred percent, like the feds are gonna kick in, or the, you know, and I'm not a hundred percent positive.
Okay.
But, and that's why I say that, I think it could be close to a really good percentage of return, and we still got two-hundred thousand dollars worth of CARES Act money that we can burn.
I, I agree. I actually think it's more than that with the new funding.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is, i- i- if we've got, if, we shouldn't miss the boat if it's out there.
I, I agree with you, but we, we just gotta make sure that we're w- w- we're doing it in a prudent way, that we're not spending, uh, twenty thousand dollars to get that five, is, is what I'm saying.
No, I, I agree, so, but anyway, I just, I wanted to throw that out there, because we really need to investigate it, and I don't know, you know, the Board of Health is kinda small to be investigating it, but.
Well, that, that being said, is, it's gonna take all of us as a community to make these things happen. And what I would suggest is Linda Ellis had sent me something on that matter. If she could please forward that to you, and, and if you could read it, and if you have the time, um, and, and understand it better than I do, certainly, uh, let me know, or we can pass it on to somebody else. That's even more reason why we need the secretary to be because an extra twenty hours a week for any of us is, um, it's a little bit of a burden when we're doing other things.
Okay, and I, I'll also check with my health agent on that.
If you can, um, but I think if, if Linda sends you that, because it, it said in the, in the email that she gave me, when I opened it up, it was a state site, and it said about the things that are allowable expenses, and what they uh, would allow for each one. Now, they may change that, and they may have changed it already, but, um, I'm all for going for whatever we can get.
Yeah.
You know? If the signs are included, I'm all for that. Go, you know, go get them. If the HVAC, um, that's fine, but I, I just wanna make sure I understand it the same way that it was presented to me, so.
All right.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Was, was there anything else? Did anybody have any questions, or? Nothing? Okay, so we're, on the agenda, it said Monday night, that's not gonna be, um, a selectman's meeting, it's gonna be next Wednesday night. Um, and hopefully, we're gonna have these other things about the votes for the, for the town hall painting, the library, and, and a few other things covered in there. So, Gerd, anything else for you?
Nope, I'm all set.
Motion?
Make a motion and we adjourn?
I see Chief Packer has his hand up for us.
Bernie, we, we skipped over the fire department entry, um, on the agenda tonight, so if we could just go over that real quick.
We can. Can we, um, d- do you have any idea what's going on with that?
So my captain, uh, arranged for one um, price on that, and we got that, and that's, that's the only one I have. I know Kevin arranged for another one. I haven't seen the quote itself, so I've only seen the one that we arranged for.
Which one did you arrange for?
Uh, it's from Looking Glass. It's the glass entry, uh, with replacement of the outer door. The other quote I never saw. I requested that quote, but never saw it.
Okay. So, so I can tell you that one of the quotes was over ten thousand, which puts it in the, uh, in a different, um, you know, in a different bid process for, for voting on it.
Um, I know, I know we were looking at to, to get this out of CARES Act as well, because it was, uh, COVID-related, with keeping people out of the station and into that front foyer, so this is kind of a time-sensitive thing for us, too.
I, I, I think maybe the best thing for me to do is get you both, um, both of the quotes.
Okay.
And then maybe you can make some recommendations, so you can understand the better, if you had some conversation with these individuals.
Okay, and talking with Rick as well, we probably are going to require a third quote, so I wanna make sure this is being done right and being done by the book, so, um, we just certainly wanna move forward with this as soon as we can.
Can you coordinate that with, with Rick, and in the meantime, I'll get you the other two quotes, so that you can, um, you can look at them and, and see if they make sense?
That works with me.
Well, now, my understanding is you're trying to change the outside door?
So all of our outdoor, outside doors need to be replaced anyways, so.
All of them?
If we can, yes. If we can get this one door covered under the CARES Act, and get reinforced for it, it's gonna be better for us.
What would be the reason for replacing that door under the CARE, uh, under the CARES Act?
So, um, security-wise, the front door entry to keep people from coming into the station and having a, uh, basically a service window, without allowing people fully into the station, to prevent that exposure to our employees.
Yeah.
That's where, we're coming from.
So if, if the front door falls under that, um, reimbursable expense, how come we can't get the other doors covered?
I, that's, that's certainly something we could look into, but that's not something that the public would access. That would be employee access only for the other doors, so I'm not sure if the CARES Act would cover that.
Um, how could we find that out?
Um, I'll talk with Rick more about that, but I'm not sure, like you said, that the rules are pretty stringent about what you can spend the money on here, so we're just trying to make sure that, uh, if there's something that is available through the CARES Act, we're getting it done. If that's available for all the doors, that's fine.
How, how's your filtration system in there, your, your heat and air conditioning and?
We don't have a filtration system there, so it's, it's pretty much just, um, the only other filtration that we have is for exhaust removal, but that's not, um, filtration like you're discussing about.
Should, is that something that you should be looking at?
We certainly can. Um, that's something that was already kind of in the works that I was working on with the, the FinCom after May first, to request the transfer of funds. I believe I have the money available due to, um, certain, um, our own department-wide status right now, because I didn't have a full-time employee for my second employee for over half the year, so I have the funds to maybe move some and not request more money from the town, so that's what I was looking at to do through the FinCom and through the Select Board after May first.
How come you don't have a second employee?
We do now, but that employee was delayed for a significant amount of time, and probably the reasons for that can be discussed at another time.
Okay, I just, I, I was just wondering if he was still shot, that's why I'm asking.
No, in fact, Lieutenant Clayton's on the, on the meeting tonight. He's our second full-time employee. He started January first, or somewhere in that neighborhood, so we do have two full-time employees now.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up. When, when you said that, I said, jeez, I hope they don't shot a, a person, and we're not filling this, the, uh, the void, so to speak.
We're, we're good right now. I was just hoping for it a lot sooner.
Okay, I am gonna get you the, a copy of those, um, um, I might even be able to email them to you, or do it, um, I think I have your email. I'll find it. Um, because I could.
You have my phone number, you can just give me a call.
Okay. Um.
If I could, if I could just, uh, go jump in on this a little bit.
Yes.
That, that door that was gonna be added down at the, uh, F D, uh, besides the second entry that was being built with the glass, uh, the exterior door was being changed, so that it was.
Uh the exterior door was being changed so that it was a push button exit uh for handicap accessible. Uh if that makes sense to you, so that if somebody needs to come into that building to the, to the fire department, then Chief Packer, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh that's why this was all getting done at the same time, because it was uh, it was rotted anyway and needed to be changed. And uh, and that was uh, it it part of the whole process, I guess you might say.
Oh, okay, so you said it's gonna be a push button?
Yeah, I I believe it's kind of like when you go to a, if you go to like a a big shopping store, that you can get that handicap button you can push.
In a door, but slowly?
Yeah, and the door opens for you so that it's gonna be handicap accessible all the way around entrance and in the building itself as well.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna let um Rick and and um and Chief Packer like work on that, get get us back to the selectmen. The most um, the most prudent way to to do that, and I think. I I want to mention to to Rick, when these guys are putting together the prices. Keep, keep the stuff separate, so it's not like, they're not like commingling things and then the price gets. Higher for each quote than it needs to be.
Yeah, so so make sure it's apples for apples.
Yeah.
When you're getting quotes, we don't get, we don't get different uh, yeah, as long, as long as everything that we put out um. Is uh, if we can justify the price difference, if they separate the line items. So that if one guy gives a quote and it doesn't include that door, we can at least add or subtract that number to see the difference.
That's right, cause we we can have one guy do the window on the inside and the other guy do the door.
Correct.
On on those things, so when someone puts both of them together, even though they're two separate prices. It brings the price higher that that triggers another level of uh.
It's, it's kind of the same thing that I did with the propane thing, uh have it broken down, so. Uh if we can keep that tank, it it we can justify and break it down.
Yeah, I I understand, okay, I'm gonna let you two, I'm gonna let you two guys work on that and then. Get back to us sometime before next week's meeting, so we can uh put these things to rest, okay?
Yeah, the only thing I, the only thing I'd like to get clarification on is the bid process on the dollar amount. I I, I thought that we were well within, as long as we got three bids uh on the ten thousand dollar max.
That's, yeah, but the thing is that it was over the ten thousand dollars.
Uh I'm sorry, I I meant, I thought that it was a little higher than ten, I'm sorry, as long as we got three bids, but I I'll double check on that too.
Okay.
Just real, just real quick, uh Rick and um should we have an R F P? So we're getting apples for apples, so any proposal we get, we're getting the same thing?
Yeah, uh yeah, that, that, yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
That's gonna put another level of um, that's gonna put another level on this that that we're gonna have to wait to. You know, to draft that up and uh and and send it, send it out for advertising and and bids? You sure you really want to do that?
No, I'm just, I'm just making sure that we're getting the same bids, you know, if we're getting three bids, let's, let's just make sure we're getting apples for apples, that's all I'm saying.
I'm, I'm thinking if it's in the five to ten thousand dollar range, we're, we're pretty clear to, it's it's considered the minimal bid that um. But once you start doing, doing it the other way, you're gonna have more people bidding on it, the prices are gonna be like the painting went from. Uh twenty-five to s- about sixty-eight thousand dollars um.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
I'll talk with Rick and we'll come back next week.
Okay, that'd be good. Tom, Tom, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um I want to remind the selectmen that uh you have a posted meeting for tomorrow night with the finance committee. And being an official meeting, you could maybe um. Do something that may, maybe needs to be done right away, the other thing that I was thinking about sitting here is could. And I'm gonna throw this out to you and Gia, could the selectmen. Uh temporarily appoint someone to uh take. Uh your minutes and distribute them out to you and Gia. You know, some individual, just do minutes temporarily until, until you hire someone. And you know, it's gonna take a little while before you hire someone, get the ads out and this and that and the other thing. Uh would it be possible to hire, and we'll call the person a temp. Even though we're not going through a, an agency and that person would realize that, you know. They may be considered for the job, on the other hand, they may, their responsibilities end once you hire somebody. But I, you know, you guys are like. It'd be nice for you guys to not have to worry about the minutes and have somebody that can take them for you for all your meetings. And like I said, don't forget tomorrow night, I'm quite sure that there's a uh posting or there should have.
Tom, it's posted and it's also posted for for next week um also, and that point's well taken, and that's why I had mentioned earlier. Somebody's interested in doing something, we certainly can, um we certainly can hire or appoint somebody as a temporary secretary. And and there's some money left in the uh accounts that we can certainly pay them. If if somebody wanted to stay on, that's fine, if they didn't, that's fine too, we could, you know, still go through the process. Uh just like you're mentioning now, so we'll, we'll be looking at those things um, Ly- Linda, you had your hand up for us? Linda? Are you going?
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Yeah, um is the chief still there and Rick?
The chief is still there.
Yeah, yes.
Alright, chief, have you or any of your friends at other fire departments ever used CARES Act money?
I'm sorry, ask that again?
Have, have you or any of your fire department friends at maybe other places ever used CARES Act money?
I can tell you that the town of Athol has used it significantly, like um quite a bit, yeah.
That's what I was hoping you'd say, okay, do you know somebody that is in charge of that, that could maybe help you?
Um I believe so, in fact, the town hall in Athol has had a um, a whole foyer put in, just like we would like at the fire station. Um put in at the town hall for like a uh a kiosk for um people that. Want to come up and do business, but necessarily the public's not allowed in the town hall at this time, so that's already been done here in the town of Athol.
Okay, so, so you have a format that you could possibly go by a roadmap?
Correct.
Excellent, can you share that with us if you get anything in writing?
I will see what I can find.
Thank you so much, thanks Bernie.
Well, yeah, with the knowledge that the chief has and and the other individuals on that and and the information like that you sent me, uh Linda. Send that to uh if you could to Ruth and and she reads it, cause she seems to be um. You know, pretty good with finances and understanding um the funding mechanism, so. If we all put our collective minds together, I'm sure we're gonna come out of this okay. Did the chief have anything else to say? I see his hand still up, is he done?
No, I didn't raise it again, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's cut, fine, okay, Gia, anything else before uh we do the?
Can, can we uh uh according to Tom Speck's uh vision of us temporarily appointing a secretary. Can we ask Linda Ellis if she'd be interested in taking that position temporarily? Because she gives great minutes for the uh Z B A.
Yeah, I I suppose we could, but I don't, I don't want to put her on the spot.
Oh, let's do it.
Maybe, maybe Linda Ellis will do some free minutes for you for a little bit right now and then think about something else.
Okay, are you, well, just give us some thought if you're even interested in that. Um in in the secretary position, do a little bit more and and just pay that goes along what it is, you're not gonna get rich, but it's um. We we would certainly um pay somebody to do that, so uh Tim?
Yeah, and I think that it's been mentioned already on this meeting that if there was anybody that was wanting to do this on this meeting. Or knew of anybody that wanted to do it, to get something to you guys to let you know that they wanted to do it, so. I think that's already been mentioned once, but yes, if uh uh anybody was willing to volunteer, let them go.
There you go, we put the feel out, hopefully we get some, some response back, so.
And also there was an assistant in the town hall for the selectmen, I think by the name of Pat Flynn. And I don't know if she's still up there anymore or not, but maybe if she did a good job before, you could reach out to her also.
Point well taken, okay, um Rick, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I I just wanna, it's something I looked up real quick here, um and I'd want to confirm it, but what I'm reading right now is. Uh anything that costs ten thousand dollars or less requires good uh sound business practices. And experiments estimated to cost between ten and fifty thousand. Uh requires at least uh three written quotes from potential vendors. Uh so I I think the ten to fifty requires the ten uh, the the ten quotes. And I believe that a quote uh would be considered if you at least made an attempt to get a quote. So even though, even though we got two quotes right, or we think we got two quotes for the fire department. We can try to find the second and maybe try to get a second and a third, but I think the uh to to be safe. I would confirm it, but the the information that I'm looking at here real quick says that the three quote processes between ten and fifty. And ten and under is using good business practices.
I, I, I think you're right, cause that was my understanding that we needed three quotes. For, for something over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so chief and I can try to get together and find out who that second guy was and see if we can find uh that second quote. And if we can't, we should at least try to make two more attempts to get quotes from other vendors. And I believe an attempt at trying to get a bid counts as a quote.
I think you're on the right track, uh Rick, if you can put, try to put that together for the next meeting, we'll, we'll move on it, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking the chief's hand is still up just because. There's a problem taking it down, correct?
I have not re-raised my hand, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I'm gonna go back to Gia because there's a motion and a second to adjourn, is, we're still okay, everybody's all set? I don't want to cut anybody off, uh. Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Fan Dryer?
Fan Dryer.
Okay, Mel and I were adjourned until next Wednesday at seven P M, okay, thanks everybody for joining in.
Night.
Yeah, good night.
Night.